Wednesday, February 8, 2023, and acknowledged that the public and press were duly notified in accordance with state law. First item on our agenda is the approval of amendment. They've already been amended.
Second.
Any comments or discussion about the recently corrected amendment? So all those in favor of approval of the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Nice work, Nicole.
Thanks. Were they amended by somebody other than me?
Well, there was a spelling, yes, spelling error that was.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. David found that. So the first order of new business is back to the comprehensive plan and the population element is where we kind of left off. A bunch of statistics and Douglas, where do you want to?
Yep, so I would just tell you that in your packets is a first draft of the revised population element. Really what's happened here so far is we've just updated the numbers that were in there with the 2020 census numbers. So it's just an additional column in our table and then in the text, just updating those numbers. As kind of an aside, I guess, not really an aside, but I would just say that here in the last month, two months, city council has been pretty focused, laser focused on the number of dwelling units as reported by the county's tax records. And they're different, you know, it depends on how you're counting what these numbers are. But I would say just in light of their kind of laser focus here over the last couple of months, that those numbers dealing with housing units, that we probably pivot from the census and just specify for those that we're going to use the county records for housing units. So that would be a suggestion and we would just update that and clean it up. And of course, you know, from a staffing perspective, we work and work to get it down to the number correct. And then we report that number at the council meeting. And then two days later, we issue three demo permits and one building permit and the numbers change. So it's an ever-changing thing. So we will just kind of have to pick a date, document the date and put it in there. We haven't done really anything in terms of goals, key issues, goals, strategies. I don't know that the, and I guess that would be a point of discussion for you all. Is there a trend that you see that leads you to want to change or add key issues, change goals, strategies, anything? Or are we just kind of doing a straight update and being satisfied with that? Guess that's a question for the group.
Well, I was going to numbers, but I guess I'll get it out of the way with right now. So the per capita in income median, that number for 2020, the 91,000?
Yes.
It works if it's not per capita. Does that make sense?
Per capita?
If you go per capita.
Income median.
If you get rid of per capita.
So just median income?
Yes, then it works.
I wonder if, so that's not a term of the census?
Well, then you would have to probably go back for all those numbers and change them. Because you have a selection for per capita for median income. And it drastically changes, goes down to like 28.
Say that again?
I'm confused.
So it gets back to the numbers, trying to get back to that graph.
So I would have assumed, and I could be wrong about this, but that the titles there are titles taken from the census tables. Is that not, are we not right there?
This is, is it the stats that you're looking at? So.
Can't see your screen.
I'll pass it over to you, but there's chart options on the bottom. And when you select per capita for the median household income, it goes down to 29.8.
Oh, which makes sense. So you have an average household of four people.
Mm-hmm. And if you get rid of the per capita.
So that's.
Selection on the graph.
So the bottom one on there, which is the household income.
Yes.
In the top one, and I think they're just counting the average salary of the people reporting that they're working. And so it's not counting unemployed people in that number. Unless you do per capita, then it would divide by the total population.
Yeah, per capita would be every resident, total revenue divided by every resident, kids, anybody, including those not making an income.
Which would be even lower than the household income.
Yes, that's right.
So this one at the top, I think is just from whenever it got done, we were talking about that. It's not per capita, it's just the median income of.
Okay.
Working people on the island.
So if you want to just make this all right, just cross out per capita.
Yep. I think I've been convinced. Does that sound right to you? Matt was the, alright.
Well, then I have, you know, in a similar vein, if our.
Does median, just.
You can do that, yeah.
Median income, but back to David's point, it's median income of, it's not per person, it's median income of those with a job.
Right.
Answering the census. Which is a very different, we don't know how many people that is.
Right.
Median income of, hmm.
But I think in most places you see it, it's just listed as a median income.
Okay. Alright, we're going to go with median income.
My other comment on the key issues was the age, the impact of the year-round age. You made a comment about the growing, or the year-round population of retirement age, 60 years and over. You have like from 2018 to 2020, the most recent, it starts to go down. Go back to that one. It was increasing until about 16, 56, 53. Where was I going with that one? It was a sharp up and down, sorry. We were in, you know what, let me figure it out and we'll come back to that one. We'll find that graph.
So was the.
Well, you're simply quoting the 2020 census indicates a 34% increase in the number of people over the age of 65, with the number of people in every other age category either decreasing or marginally increasing. Is that what you're looking at? Is that where you are?
I want to get back to that graph, because I know the median age in 2018 was 56 and in 2020 it was down to 53.
You're on the graph, I'm sorry.
So it seems like the median age over 60 is not increasing, it's decreasing.
Well, so yeah, I kind of dug into that one too. So the 34% increase, so going from 2010, 23, or 24% of our population was over the age of 65. And 2020, about 31% of our population was over the age of 65. So we also had an increase in probably people under the age of six, which brings the overall average down. But I think the point that we're trying to make is the, it's kind of the national average of over 65 is 15, 16%. So we have an elderly population on the island, which I think was kind of the point of all that.
It was trending upwards, now it's slightly trending downward.
Well, the median age, because as we're gaining old people, we're also gaining really young people.
True.
So.
So Suzanne, is your point?
Right.
I think what, if I'm understanding correctly, Suzanne's saying that the key issue, we're saying it's growing. And you may say that's not accurate. And maybe David's point is that growing or not growing, it's still a very large portion of the population. So maybe the term, the impact of a large.
There you go.
Year-round population of retirement age people. Maybe large is probably not the word.
I kind of tried, just as a suggestion, so the 2010 census indicates an increase from 24%. I'm in the text.
Okay, keep going, I just wanted to follow you. Say that again?
The 2010 census indicates an increase from 24 to 31% in the percentage of people over the age of 65. I think that gets to our point that we have an increasing population in that age group.
What does it matter? I mean, I would contend that, so I'm looking at our goals or, I mean, or our strategies and maybe the emergency services piece, but shouldn't that be applicable for everybody breathing air regardless of age?
Yeah, but they would tend to be more occupied by the people in the 65.
Yeah, I think there's a prejudice there, or take offense.
We're ageist?
Major complaint.
I haven't called 911 in days.
So our population looks like it increased until 2016 and it started a little bit of a decrease at that age from 2018 to 20. So it's very volatile.
I think you and David might be saying different, David, you're saying that in 2010, that elderly group made up 24% of our population.
Right.
Today, it makes up 33% of our population.
31%.
31%. So you're saying that that group by percentage is growing.
Right.
It's growing, I'm looking at the growth rate, which is a little, so, yes. I'm in agreement.
Alright, so back to the.
So you're looking at median age.
Uh-oh, stop Stephen.
But that's the problem, that's why I think they're talking, he's talking about the absolute number of people over 65s going up. You can have that happen and the median age still go down. That's what's happening.
Right.
Well, the median shouldn't drop as much as the average.
Right, but you can have more, you can have people over 65 going up if you have more younger people coming into, the median age can go down.
I'm going to have to get my 15-year-old, yeah, to come in here and explain all these numbers to me.
I'm sorry, Douglas. I know you've had lots of meetings with numbers, so we'll try to be common.
Alright, so I think we had a rewording of the third paragraph in the text from David, which I think is good. I was a little bit not following if we were changing, I think we've now settled that the second key issue, the impact of a growing year-round population of retirement age is okay?
Except change to 60 to 65, so.
Change 60 to 65, yep. Suzanne, you good with that?
Yes.
Alright.
Yes.
Any, I mean, are there?
So the only thing that it was, that struck me when we were talking about the house population quantity chart, we were basing that on census, now we're looking at using the county.
Yeah.
Which is a far more reliable source, but there are different sets of numbers. And if we're trying to trend, is there any way we could at least maybe trend back to 2010 with the county? I don't know if that's a possibility or not.
We do happen to have, yes, 2010, I think we have 10, 15, 20, 22.
Just something to show a pattern, I think, of consistent data instead of, you know, going census and then all of a sudden county.
Well, so I guess I hadn't really thought about that point, but for those of us that clearly like to get into the numbers and the data tables, is there then the need to leave the two data sets consistent as census? Because I guess otherwise, are we kind of using a squirrely number with an accurate number and getting, is that even worse than two slightly squirrely numbers?
I slightly, I kind of agree with him that, yeah. Census, I mean, we all know, or we should know that census is an approximation. And it's just, it's to show the trend, so staying with census.
And just, and maybe just denoting it and just saying, so we're going to, maybe we leave it as census and we just say, maybe we add a paragraph to say, in addition to the census, the city keeps records from the county's records that we think are more accurate. And at this date, is that a better way to keep the data sets?
Probably.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because people wouldn't necessarily be making decisions of legality based upon the comprehensive plan as they would by the other data set.
Right.
They're going to go to the more accurate data set. And this is more general, which should not be used by necessarily council as the bulwark for any future regulations, whatever.
Okay, I think that's, I like that approach best, I think.
And not to stir things up, but you branch out here a little bit into other barrier islands, Sullivan's, Folly, Kiowa, Seabrook. My thought when I first started reading this was on the front page that we don't really show the overall Charleston County. And that's a big number.
Big number.
I don't know what that number is, but I'm going to say, were we 20 years ago just shy of half a million? And 20 years later, we're a million?
I think that's a good point, kind of adding that line to the data to just show the whole regions.
That's the pressure on our parking and traffic and a couple of other things.
Well, that gets back to strategy, 1.2.3.
So, related to that data table and Matt's comment here, and I didn't know the answer to this, but East Cooper, we have in the existing plan, East Cooper. And I think that I think of East Cooper as including town of Mount Pleasant, Allendale, Charleston County, unincorporated areas. I think of Sullivan's Island, Isle of Palms, is all of that considered? And that's obviously, I think, looking back at the number, that's been in our plan going from 23, 33, 45, 59, 67. I suspect that is just the town of Mount Pleasant.
When I was looking it up, it was pretty much in lockstep each year with Mount Pleasant. It was slightly different, but that's why I picked.
Yeah, I would call it Mount Pleasant.
Call it Mount Pleasant.
Yeah, I think East Cooper is kind of like a nickname.
Yeah.
Rather than a specific town.
Okay.
So if it is specific to Mount Pleasant, I think you should.
Yeah, we'll change that.
Because there could be people that are looking at, oh, that's.
That's the hall, yeah.
Does that include Sullivan's Island, East Cooper? Incorporated, unincorporated, to your point.
Very good, so we'll clarify Mount Pleasant, we'll add a line for Charleston County. Going to add a sentence about, going to leave it census on housing and, but add a little descriptor there that explains we have county data as well.
I mean, if we're talking about influence, should we go beyond that? I mean, Daniel Allen is in Berkeley County.
The tri-county, seems like the tri-county area is referenced in kind of, because yeah, Somerville is exploding.
My point in putting Charleston County in there is recognizing the pressure that's coming from all of the growth and that trend that continues to be present. And that's, you know, again.
What is the, there is a boundary, I mean, that we, I think we hear of kind of the tri-county or the.
Dorchester, Berkeley and Charleston Counties, of course.
Yep. There is some metric of kind of the larger area than even just Charleston County. So maybe that'll be, maybe that would be one even.
The next step.
The next step would be.
Big numbers.
The MSA, is it?
MSA, yeah, that's, yeah. That kind of gets all of it, right? That gets the whole region.
Presumably, yeah, I would guess so. It's probably a good first stab anyway.
Alright. You know, all of the, and we'll talk about the short-term rental stuff here shortly, but the strategies of, and obviously there's a lot of scrutiny as we've talked about, the keeping records, tracking these trends, balancing, there's a lot to goal 1.2. And it seems very much simplified here in our text, but that might be best. I mean, it's small on the sheet of paper, but it's a huge part of what we challenge with. But I don't know that we need to add a lot of text to add to the importance of the issue, but.
No, but I think Sandy's recommendation to add Charleston County in here would actually make that.
Stand out a little more.
Well, yeah, some of our key issues are related to just the pressure that everything's putting on us.
Yeah, and I, you know.
As a community, a very small community.
And it's throughout the entire document. So I mean, we're seeing it here and it's captured here, but it's also captured in numerous other places. So I think it's well represented in the plan. Alright, anything else on that? You all are.
Matt, you did good.
Oh, thank you.
You're into the, you're into like the home stretch. We're down, we're getting, I think, cultural resources. And I think that's it, I think we have some cleanup on priority investment, we kind of left that one. But I believe that once we get through these last couple pages, we're on the home stretch.
Did we finish the resiliency element or we have some, you have some other things that were going to be added to it, I thought?
I think there were some, I think there were some minor tweaks. I think we had some edits from Stephen to go in there, but you're going to get it. So once we do each element, you're going to get it all as a cleaned up document. So we'll go back through it in its entirety and. Alright, so cultural resources, hopefully everybody's had had a chance to read that, we haven't. Our process has just been to kind of talk about it in general first and then you guys give us some directional comments and then we'll go back and edit it. Only thing that, you know, it still seems to, and we may have even talked about this, the, still all kind of rings true to me. There is a certain amount, you know, and I look back at these things years later. I can see that this was originally drafted shortly after our 50th anniversary celebration. It's very proudly, you know, documented in there a couple times. I don't know if that's necessary, it was certainly nice. Think we're, I think that we have, and I hadn't thought about it, but the idea of celebrating our 70th anniversary came up at council this past year. They opted not to and opted instead to move it to the 75th. So I think that there have been grumblings about 2028 having a 75th kind of anniversary celebration. So I don't know, maybe we keep it in there as it is. I, Amy, do you know if we still do Piccolos Spalletta Goes to the Beach? Does that ring a bell to you?
There was a pandemic and I think some of that stopped and I don't know.
Sand sculpture came back.
Sand sculpture.
I thought sand sculpture might have been a Piccolos thing, but I'm not.
And it's back, it's happened, okay. I'll ask for, I'll ask for the rec department to give some feedback on the events portion there.
On this historical possibility of some sort of repository for documents, I personally have quite a collection that I've compiled over my 50 years of living out here. And I think I'd like to do something with it, but I don't know where or who to burden with that collection. There's a lot of, and I know there are other people in the community that have a lot of pictures. I don't, I think Carmen Bunch had one of the original, like, 1890 brochures.
Oh, wow.
When Dr., was it Lawrence started to develop the island? And it has a whole, I have a copy of it.
Wow.
But I don't have the document anymore. I think maybe Carmen's daughter might have it, I'm not sure where that is. But there's a lot of things like that that are out there. And you go through and you were denoting, you know, historical sites. There's probably still a half a dozen Sears and Roebuck kit homes.
Oh, wow.
In the community that were part of that development at the turn of the century and more to the 1920s. You've seen them, haven't you?
Not on this island, but I worked on one on Sullivan's.
Yeah, well, there are a couple of them here, up on Carolina, Newbury Genlet. They're like Lincoln Logs, the way they were put together. I know one is for sure there, I'd have to drive around and look again. But anyway, it's.
So what about, I mean, so this plan has numerous appendices? Do you, I mean, is it something that you think?
I'm putting it out there as an ask for what might be, what could we consider? We just, somebody like me, do I just donate it to Charleston Museum and it goes into the museum and the archives? It never comes out until the 150th birthday or something, celebration for Isle of Palms? I mean, you know, that's when those things come out.
Didn't there, I don't know if it still exists, but didn't there used to be a display at the rec department? I'm not saying that's like, and I don't know if it's still there.
Now, I will tell you, around City Hall, if it sits around for more than about 35 minutes, Amy will put it right in the trash.
Circular filing system.
So we have photos from the 50th anniversary and when people were bringing us stuff, we, Leola had a lot of that. Like people brought us the brochure, the first campground and all that was Leola. And so when Leola passed, we got some stuff back, but we didn't get everything back. And we had made those big posters and things blown up. So we have a box upstairs of stuff that is in a box because we have nowhere to display it. But we do have.
Could you upload it? Sorry.
Could we make like a digital?
Right.
So there is a, there's a, well, I remember there's a, there's a room for Sullivan's Island, Isle of Palms. And it's just, because I've gone there to look for stuff and so it's just a small little room. I don't know if it's still there, but it was upstairs and it was just the island, barrier islands. And they had a lot of stuff when, I forgot what research we were doing for the 50th anniversary with there. But I mean, we need a new building here, so we should just have building space for all this stuff.
A lot of what Leola got was from. Lot of what Leola got was from Mike Satelli and his family, and, um.
We just got, I think we had a lot of copies of.
Lot of photocopies from things that I have, um, also, old postcards and stuff from the 1890s to. 1900, 1910 kind of stuff. There's a lot of.
Sounds like I just heard of a goal and a strategy that we can add.
Digital? So I don't know of a physical place. I mean, I, it sounds like what Sandy's looking for is like a physical, and, and I don't have the answer for that, but.
Should be one of the goals, is we probably should establish a physical.
A physical location?
Then decide what to do with the stuff. Once you get it, you say, okay, let's digitize it, let's display it. But I think creating a place for people like Sandy, and I, I agree with him, I hear stories all the time, is people have stuff. I think we should create a physical repository for this stuff and let it be known that we'll put, hold it and protect it, and won't clean it up after 25 minutes if it lays around.
Lock her, lock her out.
Yeah, you hear that?
I have a, uh. I have a poster that was salvaged from a fire that I had, um, a conservator repair and bring back to life. It's from 1890, and it's the Isle of Palms, and it, uh, it has some interesting depictions on it, uh. This was, was quite the paradise for hunters and hikers and. You know, beach goers, um, uh, so there's, there's harpoons, there's shotguns, there's fishing rods. I mean, it's a, it's a neat piece when you start looking at it.
And I think part of the challenge is, cause, you know, I'm kind of a his- history junkie too, but even as we say in the, the text, a lot of the physical stuff doesn't exist anymore, but there are documents and pictures, and. I think we should identify a place to, to keep that. You can't go see the buildings or the Ferris wheels or, or the, but they're all gone, but. There is a fair amount of stuff that people have in their, in their archives that we should, we as the city should say, let's establish a repository.
I know, like, Folly Beach did something years ago, started something like that, and they would. Whatever group took it on, I don't know if it was the Exchange Club, or was it Civic Club that they have, cause they have both down there, but that they took that sort of thing on. I kind of think it was the Civic Club, and they had. Um, wall space in City Hall, and they would kind of rotate out.
Okay.
Different documents for people to see, and there, so there were, there were people in the community that were kind of responsible for it, and I don't physically know where it was, and I'm happy to find out, but. But they would rotate the stuff that was out there to put on display, so the people that were in City Hall for meetings and such like that could see those things, so.
That's a good idea.
We kept that wall space. Treasure I ain't bringing.
Um.
Too many mayors.
So a new strategy?
I, we got that wall space.
Just to create or find a. A place as a physical repository? Do we also want to have a digital?
You could do both, but.
Yeah, 4.1 point two says investigate the possibility, maybe, you know, uh. The next point three would be investigate the possibility of, um, historic document, um. Repository for the future. Something simple, I'm not looking.
Yeah. Could just be wall space in a, in a.
And, and, as pointed out, there may be, there may be a group that would, would want to do that. I mean, there may be a civic group that would want to do that.
Yeah, that has it and.
Garden club do the, that kind of stuff. Maybe there's a group that said, we'll take that on. So I think we should explore a repository and maybe someone that wants to take it on.
Here, mayor might make another committee. No, you just get a cultural club. I didn't see committee.
More AV.
In the green room of the Windchamber.
It's a club.
ATAX application.
It is interesting. We, I just had, they're scanning the bunch of minutes, but we have our minute scan back from 1953. And we also, in our upstairs, the codes, we have Vella mats from the islands, and we do have some stuff like that downstairs. It's just in our, like, hardest space that we have.
I have a couple of the old blueprints. When the cross streets back here were Conk and Seashell, Seahorse, not Second, Third and Fourth Avenue. They were named, actually.
I think that's a great idea. Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Our 20 minutes is over.
That's a good one. Yeah.
I'm good at doing that.
Not a good topic, though.
Uh, do we wanna? Any mention of 75th anniversaries? Probably not appropriate for the comp plan, but. Do we leave 50th anniversary? Is that getting too? Dated at?
Well, at least it establishes the date of. The origination of the, of the city.
Yep.
When was it? Was it 50 years ago today?
50 years before, 2003.
2003.
2003.
So do the math backwards, uh.
Or you can look at the crest right there, over Sandy's.
I see 2003, yeah, there we go. I didn't see the 2003, I saw the.
Maybe we could add, Sandy, do you have a? Good postcard as a. As a, uh, interesting graphic in the middle, you know, as, in this section? Kind of talk, I know that I've seen the. Somewhere there, I've seen the old, uh, Ferris wheel. It's always neat to see. So maybe we'll think about that too, maybe jazzing up the appearance of the plan with some graphics. Alright, so we will, uh, unless there's anything else, we'll. Add those comments, get that back to you, and then I, I think we will be in a position to look at the entire, and I will say, it's. This has been considered an update, but when you scroll through the amount of changes that have been made, it's, it is significantly changed. It's not. So, there's a lot, there's a lot to digest, a lot to, um, it's a whole new comp plan. You all have done a good job and thorough. Thorough work there.
How many years ago did we start?
I think we're three years in.
I was gonna say, it started before the, before the pandemic, yeah.
Before COVID, right? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Was a very deep dive. It's been good. Anything else on that? We ready to, I was just gonna bring the group up to date on, um. Short-term rental workshops have, have been continuing with City Council. They had one Tuesday. There, there has not, I'm sorry, Monday, right, uh, there has not been a consensus, and, and they still have not. Um, voted. They've been in, in workshops, but I do think that the issue is headed to some vote at their regular council meeting. At the end of this month, the 20, 23rd, 28th? 8th, yeah. So, um, they've directed staff to kind of come up with alternatives for final, not final probably, but for. Digestion and then potentially a vote on the 28th of, of some sort. Trust everybody sees that, um, Folly Beach will be implementing a cap, that referendum passed yesterday, I think, right, Nicole?
Yeah.
Um, so I don't know if that will change the, you know, change any of the positions on City Council, but. That's, that's happening at the same time, so I, I will just say that. For those that appear to be favoring a cap at the council level, it, it seems to be a, um. Kind of a nuanced thing of exempting 4% properties. There's been a little bit of, um. There, I think that the group is kind of, those that favor a cap have agreed that commercial districts wouldn't be capped. Been a little bit of back and forth on whether other condos or kind of higher density, um. Properties would be included in that cap. So they're still kind of tossing around different ideas of how it would work. But I guess the, the primary question is, are they gonna do it at all? And we, we don't, we don't have any clarity on that yet. Um, but I think we will, at the end of the month, have more clarity.
So, comment from Sandy. We did a lot of work. We spent a lot of time. Digesting a lot of really good information, came up with what I thought and I voted for, a really good plan that we presented. And, um, not that it got shot down, but I would ask that, and I've put this to all the council people. That they consider our plan moving forward as one of the alternatives, and I, I, um. I don't know if that's, uh, some of this, this group's still in favor of, or do they have other ideas, or they've changed their minds and don't want caps, or. Um, but I still think that plan we put together was a great plan, and I've got a lot of buy-in personally from. Neighbors, friends, and other property managers, so.
Yeah, that's been interesting. I mean, I, I, to me, the issue in the back of the island was kind of clearly identified by this group, but. For whatever reason, it, it hasn't been. Embraced yet, that, as far as I can tell, and I don't know if that's just the kind of, you know, those that don't want a cap. They're not gonna go for any cap, and those that do want a cap more, want a more, uh, more robust cap, I don't know. I, I don't know the. Um, but, you know, it wasn't warmly received at, um, workshops, I, you know, and I've heard the term that it. It chose winners and losers and, um. So, so for whatever reason, I don't know if it was a, a messaging problem or issue of complexity and lack of understanding of, but. To, from my vantage point, it, it just hasn't gained, uh, traction, and, but maybe if. You know, to me, it is a pretty middle-of-the-road compromise solution that maybe. Could, both kind of sides could live with, but.
Well, again, just, just Sandy talking, the, um. No plan's gonna be perfect.
Right.
And we talked about that, and part of why we, I, you know, I think we all got behind what we did. Uh, was because we realized that anything that's out there is gonna have to be revisited, potentially, and reevaluated for what's working and what, what isn't working. And I think that'll be true of any plan that goes forward.
Yeah, that seems, the, the no plan being perfect does seem to kind of be the, the rock we can get over or around.
Yeah.
If you're just gotta, since you've kind of brought it up, I was, you know, since that time, you know, again, I haven't, it hasn't left my mind. In the, what, two months or whatever that we've had since then, listening to it. Kind of going back, it's like, is there anything I would have thought to do different, I guess, going back? And the only thing I could really come up with. That even applied in some of the issues was, are, right now, our short-term rentals are anything less than 90 days, and maybe that should be 30 days. So that a long-term rental could be a month to month, even. Cause I don't think those types of rentals, where somebody's renting for 30, 30 days is. The issues that we were trying to address with the cap. So I, I'll just throw that one out there, that kind of hindsight and listening to the issues, that's. Kind of the only thing I, I, I thought, what I would have brought up if I had thought about it at the time.
I, I would also add that if there's. Um, support through any of the solutions, and any of the solutions involve the zoning code, which I, I think they probably all would. That will come back to you all for, um, consideration and a recommendation. I think there's a way it could be done solely in the business license, if it was just a straight limit on the number of licenses that may be. Able to be done in the licensing section, which wouldn't come to you all, but, um. And all events will keep you abreast and, um, keep you informed about it, but if it's in the zoning code, it will definitely come to you all for a recommendation.
And then we can count on high attendance, lots of peer pressure, 200 emails.
Yes, yeah. You'll have, you'll have the packed house.
But a cap should enforce a plan, not the other way around. You know, there, there has to be a good plan in base for the cap to even make sense, and I, I haven't done much more than read about what Folly's done, and they just see, from. The newspaper, um, basically sounds like they're just, uh, we capped it. Now, they've got an island with a slightly different geographical shape than ours. It's. Narrower in most parts, but there are some that have six or eight. Avenues deep, um, but a lot of, I think, Folly Beach is being kind of like our, um. One A being, you know, two or three rows deep, and, um, the impact over there is felt unilaterally, but. You know, the impact of rentals is far different on this side of our island. That Folly Beach doesn't have that much of, but I just, you know, just say, 600, that's it. You know, that, that's kind of an awkward thing.
It's tough. You see the. When it starts getting complex, it starts kind of creating targets for. There's something to be said for simplicity. I mean, I, and I don't, I don't know if that's. Going back to our, y'all's plan, if that was, um. If that's the reason, just got too complex at the end of the day. I'll also add that I, I think that I'm hearing clear, um, directive that just general enforcement. You know, that everybody seems to support better enforcement of. Especially livability, I mean, it's, um. Kind of more actively enforcing things like occupancy, and, um, right now, that's done very reactively. We know that Folly Beach is going in a very proactive way. They're gonna literally have people kind of circling around. They've, they've hired, I think, four new employees. It's four, right, Nicole? Um, four new employees to handle it. Um, there's been a lot of talk about financial leakage, you know. Some folks not paying accommodations tax and, um, I've never really seen that as a livability issue per se, but it's certainly an, an issue of fairness and. You know, compliance, so I think there'll be efforts there as well. So everybody kind of seems to be of a mindset of really. Stepping up, um, resources dedicated to administration of short-term, dealing with short-term rentals.
Quick, quick question. When we first started our discussion over a year ago, we got a lot of statistics. Am I? Y'all help me. I'm asking, um, a question, hop- hoping for an answer, but, uh, it may not be available. Am I imagining things, or were there only 54%? Less than 54% owners with licenses?
I'm not following the que- 50?
The Palms, 4% owners. Some had licenses to rent the vacation rentals.
Oh, and you're wondering if that number was only 54 or 54%?
Residents had licenses to rent.
I don't remember looking at that. I don't, did we?
I looked at it, but I couldn't, right now, I couldn't tell you, but I, I'm thinking it's, was in like 50 to 100.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't over 100. I, I was thinking it was 82 or something, but it was, it was, you're in the right ballpark. It wasn't several hundred.
And the only reason I'm asking is because in the last, less than 12 months, that, if it was 100, that number's doubled. It's the fastest run-up we've ever had.
Well, there's no doubt people are getting protective licenses. I mean, you can't ignore that fact.
There's some of that.
Right.
Yeah. And in other categories too.
But to keep to the 4%, you're doing it for less than 72, 72 days a year, right?
Correct, in theory.
So as a casual.
What hap- what happens if you do 75?
I don't know.
Well. You can do more than 72.
That kind of gets back to your point. I think you do have people that are getting it now, and they could convert to a 6% later as a rental. But they want their license.
Yeah.
Another quick question, Douglas, for clarification on my part. Since the last license renewal session, there have been 233, I believe, closed transactions on the Isle of Palms sales. When you're reporting the number of licenses, are you reporting the property? Or, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Smith, you are taking out duplicates.
We, there was a time when that got past us, but. And continually doing it and redoing it, we did discover probably. Six weeks ago that the early lists did have duplicates, and we're, we now, our process removes those.
Okay.
Alright. So I'll have more to report on that at your next meeting. Should have a little more clarity after February 28th.
That's what you think.
Yeah, maybe less, maybe less clarity.
I, I admire your patience, Douglas.
And Nicole's.
You should do that.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Approximately what date in March will our meeting be?
Oh, boy.
Approximately what will the date be in March for our meeting?